I'll turn it over to our police chief.
Thank you, and good evening, board. Tonight, I'm going to respectfully request a resolution to hire Antonio Carter with a starting salary of thirty-three dollars and fifty-seven cents, which is step A of the collective bargaining agreement with an additional twenty-five cents for his associate's degree. Antonio has successfully completed all portions of our hiring process, which include polygraph, background, psychological, and a physical. We would request that Antonio's start date would be May first. So Antonio comes to us after completing almost twenty-three years of distinguished service with the United States Army. Antonio has an associate's degree from Hopkinsville Community College in Kentucky, and Antonio lists some of his highlights from his time in the military as being deployed to both Afghanistan and Iraq, and earning his airborne badge. Some of his roles in the military were IT specialist, psychological operations, or PSYOPS, recruitment, and maybe, my favorite, drill sergeant. Antonio has received multiple awards and medals to include a meritorious and service medals. And then maybe more importantly than anything, Antonio is married with a daughter. So that's a little bit about Antonio.
I'll move to hire Antonio Carter as a full-time police officer effective May first, 2024, at the step A rate of thirty-three dollars and fifty-seven cents per hour per the collective bargaining agreement. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Antonettes?
Yes.
Ms. Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes, motion carries.
Antonio, you would step up for your office.
Aye, over here if you don't mind.
Congratulations again. And now for the ceremonial badge pinning. One of the smoothest ones yet. Antonio, would you like to introduce your support group tonight?
Can you get a microphone over there?
Hold on.
Yep, can I have that for the office?
Can everyone hear me? All right. Just real quick, my father couldn't be here today. They're all, majority of our family in Washington State, so we then decided to go back to Washington State. We love the state of Ohio. We love it here. Bought a house here. Looking forward to working with the team. Chief, thank you for the opportunity. LT, thank you for doing all the paperwork, all the, you know, taking me out for the ride, the ride along. Appreciate it. My wife, thank you for the support, and my daughter. And I think that's pretty much it. Yeah. Thank you, everyone.
Welcome.
Appreciate it.
No need to stay unless you guys want to start doing the paperwork and the other resolutions for bills. Otherwise, there's some refreshments over at the station.
I'll turn it over to Pat for the fiscal officer report.
Thank you. I only have one thing tonight. I just asked for your approval of the March twenty, I'm sorry, March seventh, 2024 regular trustee meeting minutes.
I'll move to approve the March seventh, 2024 regular trustee meeting minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Antonettes?
Yes.
Ms. Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We'll have financials for the next meeting.
Very good. All right, we'll have public comment, but first, we're going to invite Andy Wolenick to the podium, please. Yep, you're a pro.
Done this, not here, but before. Andy Wolenick, executive director for Delaware County Transit, 119 Henderson Court, Delaware, Ohio, 43015. Thank you so much for the time here tonight. County, or excuse me, township administrator Wise and I have been discussing about transit and mobility options. And here at Delaware County Transit, we're growing. We're in growth mode right now. So I'm excited to be able to provide our presentation if we have it. And if we don't, I have a flash drive with it. You always come prepared. But I can start talking through some of the introductory slides. So I am a proud Ohio resident. I was born and married in Ohio. I went to the Ohio State University. My wife and I have lived here in Delaware for the last twelve years. We're proud residents of the city of Delaware. And as you actually can see, my deputy CEO, executive director, my oldest daughter Cameron is here. We have two other daughters, Elena and Josie, eight, six, and two. We're a busy home, and my wife is a nurse at Grady. So we're just all over the map these days. So when we think of transit, and see, I have these really fancy slides that kind of show.
You need a flash drive, chief?
I have a flash drive.
That's, well, I'll keep talking, and it's okay, because it'll allow me to burn through it too, because of time. When we think of transit, and we think of mobility options, you think of these grandiose things, right? So I have, there's another version of me. I have a twin brother who lives in Chicago. You think of maybe the L, the subway, the London Underground, Japanese bullet trains. You can think then of even smaller things. I started my career as a bus operator at Cota, the Central Ohio Transit Authority. You can think of autonomous vehicles. There it is. This is, it was a really good slide, I tell you.
Do you have a certain slide you want him to jump through?
Chief, if you could jump to slide four, that would be kind. So, but here's, when you think of these things, here's what you really have here in Delaware County. Oh, yep. He's a good man. There's roughly fifty transit agencies within the state of Ohio. You know some of the big ones, Cleveland RTA, Cota, Southern Ohio Regional Transit. Hey, what is transit? This rhetorical question. I had all these great pictures, see? Isn't that nice? But this is what we can think of when we think of transit. But the reality is, is that you have transit and mobility options here within Delaware County. If you, if you don't mind, just keep clicking through, sir. Yeah, thank you. One more. Look at that. So, sorry, we finally got there. So this is what a lot of agencies are kind of made up like here in Ohio. Again, roughly fifty transit agencies, only a handful that have these really big options. Most of these are like our size, smaller vehicles, lots of single rides, trying to get people to necessary medical appointments, necessary jobs, and necessary services. Next slide, please. So our core services are really tied up into two on-demand style services. There's what we call Flex. This is within the city of Delaware. It's two dollars one-way, same-day service with discounted fare for youth, elderly, and disabled passengers. They can pay one dollar for their service. As of today, our service is showing up in about four and a half minutes in front of people. You have an app that you can go ahead and schedule your ride, and of course, you can always call us for that service. And then we have our demand response service. This is our countywide service. This is why if there are people here within Genoa that use this service, this is what they're using is demand response. This is the more traditional rural transit, call-ahead, dial-a-ride service. And you can see the disparities there in the fares. Flex, two dollars. Demand response is in a tiered system. Zero to ten miles is eight dollars, eleven to twenty is seventeen, and then anything over twenty miles is twenty-nine dollars. So fifty-eight dollars round trip for the general public. Much of those trips are subsidized through partnerships and programs that we have. Next slide, please, sir.
Where does the mile count start?
Origin, origin, destination.
Okay, so it's not from your garage?
No, sir. No, sir, for the trip. No, sir. Yeah, that would, that'd be completely impractical. Yeah, absolutely. So I'll, so I'll try to burn through these slides here. So we were born out of necessity back in ninety-five, and it was through these agencies, they needed mobility options for their people. And you can see, it's a lot of the sensitive people groups. It's a lot of the disadvantaged that don't have mobility options, don't have ways to get around. And we actually started utilizing the service with the Delaware Cab Company. Next slide, sir. So during this time, though, ODOT comes in and says, hey, you're a de facto transit agency. Isn't that really great? The reason that they did that was then we were able to get money through the rural transit system. It's managed by ODOT. It's a large pot of money. They're able to help out a lot of transit agencies, and for years, they helped out, at the time, we were called DATA, Delaware County Transit. Next slide, please. So then 2014 shows up, or excuse me, the 2010 census shows up, and it takes them four years to figure out what the census data says, right? And they come in and say, hey, you're actually a larger urban transit agency now, which is interesting to think about, because when you think of Delaware County in circa 2014, you wouldn't say it's like an urban epicenter. But according to the FTA, it was. So it changed the funding completely, and we had to get really inventive on how we went from a rural system to being managed by ODOT, to being managed by the FTA. You can think of just how that, how that becomes more voluminous and cumbersome. Next slide, please. So this is where we started to build our system off of what's called a fixed route system. So this is twenty, this is a map of 2019 service. You can see those different colored lines. And I picked this map intentionally, because as a proud resident of the city of Delaware, our service was too centered and Delaware city-centric. And you can see that. Fixed route service is the concept of a vehicle going up and down a street on a scheduled time. You can see how circuitous some of these routes are. So we started to lose ridership in between 2016 and 2019, because people couldn't find the practability of using this system. Next slide, please. Of course, then there's that crazy pandemic, right? So what happens is it fundamentally changes the way that we had to do business. The FTA comes in and says, you can only have two people on your vehicles at any time. So our fixed route system wasn't made for that. We would have to deny people at the door for their trips. So we created our micro transit service, our Flex service. Go ahead, sir. You see that our ridership increases. I left those numbers off intentionally. You'll have to click one or two more times for me, please. So here in the past two years, we've broken ridership records, never seen before for this agency. The eighty-four thousand that you see there in 2016 was the highest that we ever performed prior to 2022. So we do a hundred and four thousand trips. We do a hundred and eighteen thousand trips last year, and we're on schedule to do a hundred and thirty-nine thousand trips this year without some things I'm about to say here. Next slide, please. So how do you do it? We didn't really change our service, so what we did was we doubled down on the customer experience. We provided internal metrics to be able to tell our board and share that information with them, how we're doing and how we're managing our time and resources. We went to our partners. There's several county agencies at that table for a panel for our strategic plan. We started to just reinvest in those things that work. We got an app through a vendor called Via Transportation, and it's amazing. It's super easy to use, and we're seeing a forty percent usage rate within our system, which is really exciting for us. Next slide, please. And there's, so that was in 2023, right? No slowing down. We've broken ridership records all in the first quarter here. You can see those numbers there. It's been an exciting, very busy year for us so far. And then I like, I like the announcement. Next slide, sir. And go ahead and click it one or two more times for me. Thank you so much. So for the first time in nearly ten years, we're expanding service. So we're expanding our hours of service within the city of Delaware. That Flex service today is Monday through Friday, six AM to six PM. You can see where some of the gap is and what people may want. We're going to go now, Monday through Friday, five AM to nine PM, and Saturday, eight to four to start. We're going to build to six to six on Saturday, and eventually Sunday, but those are just lower ridership days typically. Why are Galena and Sunbury up there? It's a great question. We're going to do our new first micro transit zone since 2020 in these neighborhoods, in these, in the city and in this village. And we're so excited to be able to start doing that with these partners. Next slide, sir. One more for me. So how do we match that? How do we meet this? And this is part and parcel why we're here, not just to share our story of where we were, where we are, but where we're going. That's what's really important today. We just got our strategic plan approved two weeks ago at our board meeting, and you can see what the process was. It was a seven, roughly seven-month process of public engagement, steering committees, you name it. Many of you have been through these processes. But it's now a ninety-two-page document with a two-hundred-and-fifteen-page appendices and a nice little four-page executive summary to tell the community, this is where we're going to build transportation options for our growing community. Next slide, sir. And I do have to highlight, we did skip one slide. We are managed by a board. We have a seven-person board. Our chair, many of you know him, our chair is Frazan Ahmed, the executive director for the Ohio Turnpike. And I'm privileged to have what I think is one of the best boards here in the county. And I'm open to any questions or comments.
When you talk about the borders of who is eligible to ride this, you noted Galena and Sunbury. Must you be in the village border or just the zip code?
It's a great question. So I'll use the example of what we do for the city of Delaware. We create a geographic boundary, so your origin and destination of the trip to be that Flex micro transit has to start and end within that boundary. It's the city limits, so we would use the city limits and the village limits. Tentatively, we're going to go as far west as the city limits go, which is just west of seventy-one, to as far east as they are today, to as far north, to as far south. So kind of, if you can kind of think of that area, that's where it would be.
Thank you.
Yeah, great question.
How about funding? How are you funded?
Yeah, so we are almost solely funded by the FTA. We do have some wonderful local partnerships with SourcePoint and JFS, but we get much of our money through, through the state and through FTA.
And are you a nonprofit or for-profit?
We are quasi-governmental, which is a fun title, right? So yes. I pay into purse, right? And I have since I was eighteen, so that's it for me. That's an easy way to just kind of, that's, that's where we are. And we do have a really great partnership with the county for kind of those extra services, right, HR and other such things. Yeah.
All right, very good. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I appreciate the time.
All right, we'll open up to public comment. And if you could state your name and address for the record.
Yes. Rick Wieland, 9500 Britton Woods Drive, Galena. I just wanted to stop again tonight, and I wanted to follow up on some of the zoning questions that I had before, as far as some stuff goes. And I talked to Mark earlier this evening or whatever. I was trying to get with him, but then he had some problems with some vacation stuff, so he talked to me this evening, said he could probably try and get a meeting together sometime coming up next week, hopefully. Is that okay, Mark?
Yeah.
Okay. So I'd like to continue that on then, or whatever, stuff, before I would bring too much stuff in front of the board at this point. I did offer you guys a little bit of a guide that I came up with as far as the zoning commission, because I understand we're in the update stage as far as our stuff. And I went to a couple zoning meetings, and the chairman, David there, seems to be running the meetings a little bit fast, as far as I'm concerned. And he might need to slow down a little bit and spend a little bit more time on this stuff. So I'm afraid it's, I don't want to see it get rushed through or whatever. You know, before in the past, we, Joe amended the SR district in section eight to thirty thousand square feet on a one-time thing without any consideration to what that does to all the other parameters of that section. And David and the guys were jumping right over that at their meeting until I brought it up to them and stuff. So I think they need to cool their brakes a little bit, and I really think they need some guidance on some of this stuff. And I believe there are some things available to them through the Ohio Revised Code, where if they need some help, they can actually ask for it and have it paid for through the township and trustees and stuff. So if they can't do it on their own, I suggest that they might have to have some help. Or it needs to start with maybe Joe Schaefer getting more guidance and stuff on it, too. So those are some of the things I'd like to follow up in future, rather than with the trustees. On my second issue, I was talking to Lauren here this week about some drainage issues up in our neighborhood, because some tiles have been put in in some of the front yards to help the residents with water pounding in the areas. And when our subdivision was put in, it was engineered through Delaware County subdivision. And there's codes for the ditches that have to be a three, three-to-one and four-to-one back slopes on the ditches. And with the township going up there from what they've done, they're not adhering to that stuff, which is causing some other flows into the neighbors' yards at this point. So I think that, you know, we need to, somebody needs to backtrack on this stuff and make sure it's still stuck into the county engineer's standards and the townships doing what they can do to stay in those standards and still make everything work nice up there. That's all I have this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for public comment? All right, I'm going to close, and we'll move on to trustee comments. Do you have anything?
Nothing.
I have nothing right now.
All right. I have a couple things. One, I've had a few residents reach out to me just today about solar eclipse glasses. We've been advertising for this for months, but we still have, I won't say plenty, but we have quite a few left. So if you have, are in need of solar glasses, you can show up at the Township, Paul, or our police department. They both have solar glasses available. The eclipse is Monday. And also, I want to thank Leslie for the Bunny Hop Trail event that was held the week, Saturday before Easter. I thought it was well-attended. I thought it was a great event. And I'd also like to thank all the volunteers, because that could not have gone off as well as it did without our volunteers. So, and I failed to mention last month that at the OTA conference in February, I was elected as an OTA director, the Ohio Township Association Director. So I'll be serving at the state level for, to help townships with just revisions to the Ohio Revised Code, and I'm looking forward to that, considering what's going on at the State House right now with zoning. So, and that's all I have. So we will move on to administration with Paul Wise.
Thank you. Good evening, board. First off, under administration, the township has been behind the scenes, working on revising their personnel policy manual, and it's been under legal review, and legal has turned that over to the township for their comments at this point. My department heads sat down together with the revisions, and we discussed the policy in a three-hour meeting. It was a very, very good meeting. We handled a lot of questions about it, and we, we have some input to give to the Board of Trustees, but we're afraid that with that much minutia at a regular meeting, we might bore the heck out of the public. So I'd like to ask the board if they'd be willing to schedule a meeting next week, maybe Wednesday, Thursday, at like nine AM, so that we can go over revisions and then some other agenda items at that meeting.
Either day works for me.
So I started to jump into this. It's pretty comprehensive. So do you have any idea how much time we'd be spending, considering it's a workday?
Probably about two hours. Pardon me?
Sir, Thursday, we have our public records training, which-
Okay, I'm sorry. Thursday's out. Probably a couple hours, Mark.
Okay.
Because we've, we've grunted a lot of this. We've carried, and the attorneys cleaned up a lot of the policy itself, but there's other things that we need to make consistencies with throughout. So probably a couple hours will do it, if you can spare, starting at nine, when we're all fresh and coffied up.
I can do Wednesday without a problem.
I can't do Wednesday. My whole morning's booked up.
Do you want to look at the next week?
I can do Tuesdays. My Tuesday's open.
Is Tuesday okay with you, Donna?
Tuesday, the ninth.
Tuesday, the ninth. So in addition to that, we've, we've had some resignations on BZ. We had a resignation on BZA that came through today. We'll, I'll add those items to the agenda for that morning, and we'll schedule that for Tuesday at nine. Secondly, at the last trustee meeting, the board okayed the creation of an ad hoc committee for some members of the public that I can, I put together. And so I had a group of four residents, namely Bill Bird, Ryan Andrews, Carrie Mano, and Pat Blaney. They sat down with Lauren Fitzpatrick, Bob Matthews, and Mark Antonettes and I, and we had very good meetings. We had several meetings take place. At those meetings, we looked back over the last levy cycle, and Bob and Lauren described all the good work that they've done. They actually, they, they did such a good job. They budgeted more roads than we anticipated, which is a good thing. The bad thing is, and the committee recognized that with inflation, with road costs, the materials, et cetera, aggregate, pipe, everything else has gone up. So we looked at the existing levy, which is a two-point-one-mill levy, and the voters approved it outstandingly last time. The committee looked at several options, but at the end of the day, they recommend a minimum effect on our taxpayers. They're recommending a renewal of two-point-one-mill, which is the same level of funding that we currently have. That two-point-one-mill will bring in roughly two-point-five million dollars a year. So to fund the expenses, et cetera, we'll need additional money to do that, which they did take into consideration all sources of revenue, which were the motor vehicle license tax, the permissive license tax, the gas tax money. And we also have a road and bridge inside millage, which it's a point-six-mill. The good thing is, that inside millage is subject to the inflationary assessments that the auditor did. So luckily, that will be bringing in another two-hundred-thousand dollars a year, plus or minus. That's the good news. The bad news is, at the current spending, and we've been budgeting around one million dollars a year on roads, on the paving project, which we promised at the last levy cycle, we're not going to go very far with that figure going forward. Basically, that, if we stick with the one-million-dollar mark over five years, then the majority of our roads that are in the range that are lower will be going to pour. So in order to keep up with a replacement schedule, and right now, we're looking, if we stick with the one million dollars a year, that's going to turn us into a replacement schedule of over, over thirty-five years, which is really not good on public. We don't want to appear to be substandard. We have great residents here. So what the committee is recommending, and this is only a recommendation that they made to Bob, Bob's going to adjust his specification on his roads, which he and Lauren feels could work out. On some of the back roads, he's going to go from a three-inch asphalt- On some of the, the back roads, he's going to go from a three-inch asphalt when it's time to pave to a two-inch, which will save us a lot of money. But still on the collector routes, he's going to keep the three-inch standard where those roads take the most beating. Next up, the committee is recommending that at a status quo renewal rate of 2.1, it's going to require, if you want to lower that re, the replacement schedule down into like a 25-year or 30-year range, you're going to have to have a contribution from the general fund be made. Either, so they're recommending, if you wanted to go with a 30-year replacement schedule, it's going to require a $300,000 addition into the road fund, which would be a transfer over from general fund to roads. If you decide to do a 25-year replacement schedule, which is putting basically going from a $1 million road paving program to a 1.62 million paving program per year. It's a 25-year replacement schedule. That would be requiring a $500,000 contribution from the general fund. They understand that the road, the general fund did add a park levy a few years back, which has been helping the general fund with their, with their costs and with their inflation. So they said, the general fund is going to receive some extra money with the reappraisals, a couple hundred thousand extra, three, four hundred thousand a year on the reappraisal. So that funding will go up in the future. In addition to that, in 2026, the Genoa Township TIF will be expiring. And they're recommending that if the TIF expires, whatever else is remaining balance in the fund after we're made, after we make the city of Westerville schools whole, then that money be transferred into the general fund. So it was a great, we had great meetings, great discussions. I know Mark's there, Bob and Lauren, if they want to make any comments, if you want to add anything that I've missed, feel free to do so.
That was a great job of summary. It was very challenging and difficult. We had, I think, three evening meetings. The committee did a fantastic job of working with Bob and Lauren and putting together just pages of statistics and, and numbers. And we got great input from the, from Pat, the previous trustee. And as a civil engineer, I appreciate, I'm sorry, what's the Darren?
Ryan Andrews.
Ryan, who is an engineer with EMHNT. We both have experience in this. I, I would not recommend we go with the 30 to 37 years on roadway. It's, it's too much. We'll get too far behind and we'll lose the ability to keep up with the needed roadway improvements. We worked hard to provide a plan that will not increase the residents' taxes. And I would just ask that if, if the fiscal officer and Donna can kind of review and agree that using general funds will, won't put us in jeopardy with our balance, that I would, that's my preference.
Do you have any comments?
No, this is all, I need some time to think about this. I'd like to see some of the information in writing so I can digest it that way.
There, and, and a lot of this was based upon, and we have, as a township government, we have the best bookkeeping on all of our roads with the replacement rankings and replacement, what we've done. Every year after our paving projects, all of the roads we've done get moved down to the bottom and the rankings changed is excellent. So I know Mark really was impressed with that system. We can provide you-
We would have paid a lot of money to provide the, the statistics and analysis that they've put together on the condition of our roads. It's super impressive.
I, I just want to say, I commit, I thank first of all, the committee members for volunteering their time and their talent to our township. Two, I want to commend the committee because I was in favor of no tax increase. I think our residents pay enough taxes and especially with the reassessment. So I commend the committee for coming up with a creative way of trying to work with what we have. But yeah, I'm not ready to make a decision on this.
I will provide you with a lot of statistics, so.
That would be great.
The committee, these folks, three of the four members were engineers. They're very much number geeks. Do you hear that, Bill?
Nothing wrong with that.
I wasn't counting you, Mark. I know you're an engineer at the table, but three of the, the citizen members that were in, who were engineers, so. I appreciate their knowledge and bow to their statistical knowledge, so.
Well, and I want to echo what Mark said. I would like Pat and Donna to look at the figures and, and spell it out for us. What, how is this going to impact the general fund before we make a decision? I need validation.
And do we have any idea how much may be left in the TIF fund at the end?
I'll have to do some figuring on that.
That'd be helpful too.
Okay, that's, that's my report about that. And maybe there might be more information at the special meeting. I'll, I'll provide you with data tomorrow.
Okay, sounds great. Thank you.
Next up on the agenda, I'm, I think this is the point where I'm going to hand it over to Bob and Lauren because they were at the parks meeting last night and I wasn't.
Very good. Bob or Lauren, somebody needs a microphone.
First up is accepted resignation of Zach Gilkerson from Buildings and Grounds.
Okay, I'll move to accept the resignation of Maintenance Technician One, Zach Gilkerson, effective April 19th, 2024. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Mr. Antoness?
Yes.
Ms. Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes, motion carries.
This is Higher Buildings and Grounds Technician One. Don't have the name.
Nathan Hudson.
Yeah, Nathan Hudson.
Okay, I'll move to Higher Nathan Hudson to the position of Buildings and Grounds Technician One, effective April 15th, 2024, at $21.12 per hour with a six-month probationary period and with a $1 hour increase upon obtaining a Class B CDL. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Mr. Antoness?
Yes.
Ms. Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes, motion carries.
The next one is award contract for the concrete work that we'll be doing for the projects to McCoy Paving. And he does have the bid guarantee and the bond and all this stuff signed.
Okay, I'll move to accept as the result of the bids opened March 29th, 2024 for asphalt, concrete, stone, trucking, plastic pipe, and paving contracts, a bid award to McCoy Paving Incorporated. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Mr. Antoness?
Yes.
Ms. Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes, motion carries.
Okay, and the next one is we need a PO for ADS pipe and materials for Bretton Woods for $13,135, $155.
Okay, I'll move to approve the following purchase orders. McCoy Paving Incorporated for $100,000 for concrete, ADS, $13,155.54 for a pipe project to be reimbursed by residents. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion.
Yeah, could you elaborate a little bit on the reimbursed by residents?
Yeah, we, we give them an estimate and then they pay us back what it costs on their property.
What do we, what, what pipe are we replacing?
There's no pipe there now. They just want pipe.
So they're wanting their ditch line eliminated and pipe to take its place.
Roadside ditch?
Roadside ditch, yes. So the residents pay for the materials used and we perform the labor.
And how do we secure payment?
Taxes.
No.
No.
They're paying, they're paying upfront.
Oh, are they? Okay, I thought you said-
Okay, so we will receive this before we proceed?
Yes, and they've already received their estimates. They've all agreed to the estimates, so the invoices have went out. So we're just awaiting payment from the invoices and for you guys to approve the payment to ADS.
This is in your neighborhood, right, Rick?
Yeah, that's why I wanted you to make sure that-
If you come up to the mic.
Yes, that's why I wanted you to make sure that we, we follow up on this stuff with the county and make sure, the county and make sure the engineering stuff is correct.
Can you reintroduce yourself real quick?
Yeah, Rick Whelan again, Bretton Woods Drive. So, because the big, the big problem I'd have with this is if they go ahead and put the tile in, which they've already done in a couple of areas, and it's causing problems in the residents' yards and stuff because it's not put in and it's not the code as far as the development design, as far as the ditches and the slopes on the ditches. And if they take that stuff away and they cause more problems because of that, then we're going to have more cost associated with this and possibly going back in and redoing, ripping all the stuff out and lowering it. Because the ditches weren't put in properly the first time for this distance. See, some of the areas, it works out pretty good, you know, for this to go in, but there's other areas where just putting a tile in and throwing the dirt over top of it doesn't allow for the road to, to drain correctly. And you can consider that stuff, Mark, as engineering, so. So that's what I'd want you guys to look into a little bit before we move too far ahead with this stuff. And make sure that number one is going to, you know, finalize and be final, you know, years into perpetuity as far as stuff goes. And we're not going to have problems with it in the future and stuff, so.
Okay, thanks.
All right.
Any other discussion, I guess? Roll call.
Mr. Antoness?
Yes.
Ms. Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Motion carries.
That's all we got.
Okay.
We got one more thing with the naming of the new property for Freeman Farm.
Yep.
The PAC committee discussed, and they, they came up with four suggestions for naming of the park or preserve, whatever we decide to call it. Century Farm is one, Legacy, Freeman Farm, followed by Historical, Festival, or Community is what they're suggesting, or The Homestead. That is their four suggestions.
All right, any comments? I, I need to think about it. I don't know.
It's, yeah, it's just suggestions that they came up with. I know you guys requested that.
Yes, and I appreciate them working on that.
It was a good discussion last night and it was narrowed down to four, or you would have had like 14.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That makes it even harder.
Thank you for narrowing it down.
But I think one of the big things that came out of all of this is that there would like, the, the group would like to have some recognition of the Freeman family. And part of the confusion is we already have a Freeman Road Park. So that made it more difficult. You can't just say the Freeman Park. And as a result, we looked at some of these other options. And I know in the note that came out today, it was stated that we should have some sort of a dedication plaque or something like that to at least acknowledge the over 100 years that that farm was there, so.
Myers, what else names you could call it?
Wise Park.
Oh, thanks.
I, I wasn't present for this part of the meeting last night.
Yeah.
But I just wanted to kind of share my feelings on the suggestion of festival. I think that's, I think that's risky. I, I think that's promising a festival there. And I, I just don't think that's a good, a good title for, for that. I just wanted to put kind of my two cents on that. I like all the other suggestions, but that's the only one that kind of trips me up is I, I'm not a big fan of that.
Okay.
Just because of what it suggests. Yeah. The other thing that came up was because it is abutting Jaycocks. The, the discussion was, does Jaycocks keep their name? Does it get merged? Because it's named for a road. We don't know anybody, nobody could think of anybody named Jaycocks. And so does it get one name for the whole thing with a north and south entrance similar to what we have at McNamara? Or a Jaycocks and a Lewis Center entrance? So those are the other things that came up in the discussion as you think about the names.
Thank you. All right, anything else? I'm going to turn it over to police and the chief.
We just have one, one other item, which I would respectfully request. A motion for the Board to a resignation of Brad Houston from the Police Advisory Committee, effective April 1st. Brad, Brad had to move up to Cleveland, so he's no longer in the area.
Okay, I'll move to accept the resignation of Brad Houston from the Police Advisory Committee, effective April 1st, 2024. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call. Oh, sorry, discussion.
Do we need to reappoint someone else?
Well, we can. We don't have to. One of the things with police, and I'm going to say this and maybe the chief will be not happy with me. But I think that there's a lot of members on police. And we have talked previously about working that number down to a more manageable level. So it, this would be an opportunity to do that if we choose to and then update our handbook.
Okay, with that, chief.
I'm good.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I'm in the camp of, I don't think, because there are so many members, I don't think that it, when one leaves, it's going to matter. All right, roll call.
Mr. Antoness?
Yes.
Ms. Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes, motion carries. All right, next, we have Chief Ponzi.
Good evening, Board. myself and the battalion chiefs and Lisa, our office manager, have been reviewing our finances and our forecasted expenditures, looking towards the end of the levy. And I've come in front of you this evening to ask permission to form a committee to review our financial situation. With your permission, to form a committee to review the expenses and to gather some further direction of where we would proceed from here. Similar to what Paul did with the road levy committee. So that would pleasure the Board.
You have my bless, blessing.
And if it would also please the Board, I know Mark sat in on the, the road levy, if that's the correct term I'm using. I think that was helpful with his background. And also, I think it'd be helpful if we had one of you all that would sit in on this committee, excuse me. So that you're part of the conversation and also it brings an elected official to the committee as we go through things and they can see the process of how we're vetting where we believe we need to be looking towards in the future.
I agree with that and I'd be more than happy, since I'm the fire liaison, if my colleagues agree.
Sure.
Agreed.
You had all your evenings booked, right?
As long as it's not him, I think he's all right with it.
Hey, Joe, based on the bill going, if you wanted to invite me, I wouldn't mind coming to some of those meetings.
Yes. I like that idea.
Make every one, if you do them at nine in the morning, things like that, but if I could be there.
I think it makes sense for you or Donna to participate.
It's something I can't make if she can, or if it's the evening, I can't, whatever.
I was thinking it was probably going to, with everybody else, excuse me, I was thinking it was probably going to be evening meetings. Most people, I think, working during the day, hard to get everybody together early in the morning. So, thank you. We'll keep you updated on that progress. Okay? Secondly, I believe it's at the last trustee meeting, one of our former fire advisory committee members may have made a mistake during his application period to be reappointed. And he was appointed to the police advisory committee, but his actual intention was to be re-employed to the fire advisory committee. The gentleman's name is Frank Mitchell. So I don't know whether you rescind the res, I don't know how that happens, but ask for him to be, I want him back.
Removed, yeah, I get it. I get it.
However we do that.
You know what they say about a police officer? Everybody loves a firefighter.
All right, I'll move to accept the resignation of Frank Mitchell from the Police Advisory Committee, effective immediately. Do I have a second?
Second.
Wait, wait a minute. He's not resigning.
Yes, he's resigning from, I'm sorry, yes. Yeah, from the police, because we appointed him to police by accident. So we, we need to accept his resignation- So, we, we need to accept his resignation from the Police Advisory Committee first. All right, and you seconded it, right?
I seconded, yes.
All right. Roll call?
Yes.
Ms. Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes, motion carries. And next, I'll move to appoint Frank Mitchell to the Fire EMS Advisory Committee. The thing is, when, when is his term up? With the term ending March 31st?
It's three years.
2027?
Right.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, or discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Antoinette?
Yes.
Ms. Goodman? Ms. Vaughn?
Motion carries.
And the last thing. Would request a education incentive for Captain Craig Downey. Craig has completed his necessary coursework and obtained his bachelor's, excuse me, bachelor's degree from, I believe it's Columbia Southern University. His sealed transcript has been turned in to the HR director. And per the contractual agreement, that entitles him to a $1 an hour increase in his base hourly rate.
I'll move to approve the education incentive in the amount of $1 per hour for firefighter, paramedic Craig Downey for a bachelor's degree from Columbia Southern University per the collective bargaining agreement, Article 15.8 of the IAFF Local 4307. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Mr. Antoinette?
Yes.
Ms. Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right. Anything else from anyone else? All right, announcements, April 9th zoning commission meeting, April 11th communications advisory committee meeting, April 23rd BZA, or, uh, meeting. May 1st Parks Advisory Committee meeting, and the regular trustee meeting is May 2nd, 2024. At this time, I'll move to adjourn to executive session at 7:22 PM to consider appointment, employment, promotion, dismissal, discipline, demotion, or compensation of a public employee and to conference with an attorney for the public body concerning disputes involving the public body that are the subject of pending or imminent court action. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Mr. Antoinette?
Yes.
Ms. Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes, motion carries. We're adjourned at 7:22 PM.
I'll move to return from executive session to regu- ah, sorry. The regular trustee meeting at 9:03 PM. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Mr. Antonetti?
Yes.
Ms. Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn.
Yes. Motion carries. There is no more business to come before the board this evening, so I'll move to adjourn this meeting at 9:03 PM. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Mr. Antonetti?
Yes.
Ms. Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn.
Yes. Motion carries. We're now adjourned at 9:03.